I'd like to call our Monday, October 23 regular meeting of the Board of Education, the East China School District together. We'll start with a moment of silence and pledge allegiance, please.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is items of interest, recognition, and inquiry. First from any of the board members.
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate, first of all, the St. Clair varsity boys tennis team. They made it to the state finals for the 20th year in a row, which is a pretty amazing accomplishment. That was after being the regional champs. So they won the regional. They ended up in the state tournament, finishing ninth in the state. They had two players, Troy Distlerath and Eli Peanu, made it to the quarterfinals, and John Mason made it to the semifinals. So, pretty impressive for those guys. Marine City, on a note as well, they were third in the regional, and Aubrey Comment qualified as an individual to go to the state tournament. So, congratulations to all the tennis players.
All right, that's awesome. Anybody else?
I will mention the football team from Marine City. They made it into the playoffs. They're playing Richmond at home this Friday at 7:00. I also saw, I believe, Marine City cross-country went to states, I think. I saw something about them, and congratulations to them. And I believe Kara Lycans from St. Clair with golf also. So there's a lot of good, positive things going on in this district that we need to be proud of. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we had a superintendent advisory meeting on Wednesday, in which three representatives from each high school are there, and it was probably the best one I've attended in three years. The kids were open and honest and engaging and with each other, and it was nice to see that. So, and I think that you led that direction also, so I thought it was a really good meeting.
Thank you. We had a lot of fun. It's great to hear their feedback.
Mm-hmm.
Mrs. Seibula?
I wanted to publicly thank our, one of our bus drivers, Terry Gammon, our Director of Transportation, Larry Strunk, Teacher Nancy Tyler, and paraprofessional Michelle Zor for keeping our students calm and safe during a bus incident that we had on October 10th. It really was a scary situation, and the Marine City Police Department, the Marine City Fire Department were also right there to work with our school officials to keep everyone safe, and I just want to thank them. We are so very fortunate to live in such a supportive community. So thank you to everyone that kept that situation calm. I'd also like to mention that tonight and tomorrow are parent-teacher conferences for our middle schools and for our high schools. So this evening, our secondary administrators are not here, and also, some of the recipients of the East China Educational Foundation grants will be at their conferences this evening, and they will not be here to accept their award when their name is called, and I just didn't want anyone to wonder where they are because we are so grateful and thankful for all the education foundation does to support East China, and I don't want anyone to wonder where they were this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda, special recognition, East China Education Foundation grants, Colleen Stover and Alicia Young.
Members of the Board and Superintendent Seibula, on behalf of the East China Educational Foundation, Colleen and I are pleased to be here tonight to present the Fall 2017 Grants. The foundation is an endowment fund through the Community Foundation of St. Clair County, and with the grants awarded tonight, we've given out over $144,000. Tonight, we have 20 grants ranging from $150 to $750 being awarded, for a total of $8,443.30. First up, we have Donna Verstegen from Palms Elementary. She is purchasing a Chromebook to use in her classroom at Palms. The students will use the Chromebook to complete assignments through Google Docs, prepare assignments with Google Slides, and research projects for writing. Congratulations. Next, we have Cindy Weisman from St. Clair High School. Cindy's awarded $500 towards the Legacy Project. This project is focusing on the beautification and connectedness at St. Clair High School. It's going to allow the graduating classes to leave their personal legacy and mark their own personal spot on the school grounds. Congratulations, Cindy. Next, we have Katie Phelan from Pine River and St. Clair High School. She's purchasing the Expanding Expressions Toolkit to use during her weekly speech and language sessions. Congratulations, Katie. Next, we have Megan Hargrave from Gearing. She's purchasing a variety of assistive technology items to help her students improve their ability to intend and engage in the classroom. A variety of sensory tools were requested so that the students' individual sensory processing needs can be met. Congratulations, Megan. Next, we have Gabrielle Duda from Pine River Elementary. She's purchasing leveled books for her kindergarten classroom at Pine River. The next recipient is Jason Perrin from St. Clair High School. Jason is purchasing a Chromebook to use in his science classes. Jason's going to incorporate technology and use the applications in their daily science courses. The students will use online resources, academic websites, virtual labs, as well as the Khan Academy to enhance comprehension. Congratulations, Jason. Next, we have Kathy Grebe, Deanna Moses, and Emily Cobain from Bell River Elementary. Kathy, Deanna, and Emily will purchase headphones for their second grade classrooms. These headphones will be used with iPads and desktop computers. Karen Maitland from Bell River Elementary. Karen is using her grant money to purchase articulation therapy materials. Next, we have Sherri Kemp and Pam Schneider from Gearing Elementary. Sherri and Pam will be purchasing five Core Grow With Me adjustable stools and 10 leather stools to use in their second grade classroom. This will allow students to pick a seat that is comfortable for them and meet their individual needs. Congratulations, Sherri and Pam. Next, we have Tracy Bennett from St. Clair Middle School. Tracy teaches the cognitively impaired students at St. Clair Middle School. She would like all students to be part of their community and enjoy it, so she asked the foundation for $285 to take her students on a field trip to the Liberty Riders Horse Farm. The psychological benefits of horseback riding include improved confidence and self-esteem, enhancing social relationships, and improving coping skills. Her students will use this experience in journal writing and discussion with their peers. Congratulations, Tracy. Lori Hannan from St. Clair Middle School. Lori's purchasing the materials necessary for her students to participate in the block project. This project promotes community, collaboration, creativity, and positivity. The finished block will be displayed later in the community. Congratulations, Lori. Jessica Jones from Bell River Elementary. Jessica is awarded $477.34 to purchase three of the Core Wobble Stools and weighted sensory items to help the students focus. By being more focused and engaged, the students will be better equipped to access the curriculum. Pam Young from Marine City Middle School. Pam is purchasing materials to test and complete hands-on building projects for use both in her science classroom and with the Science Olympia team. Michelle Davis, Nicole LaPerle, and Rachel Radigan from Gearing Elementary. Michelle, Nicole, and Rachel are early childhood teachers, and they will be purchasing action toys, cause-and-effect toys, pretend play materials, manipulatives, science materials, and simple turn-taking games that support the areas of development, as well as align with the Michigan Early Childhood Standards of Quality for Preschool and the COR Advantage Assessment Tool for Young Children. Congratulations, ladies. Amy Lawson from Gearing Elementary. Amy's using the grant money to purchase Lakeshore Storytelling Kits 1 and 2, as well as Tabletop Storytelling Board. These items will increase student engagement and increase oral narratives at the preschool level. Congratulations. Kika Milligan from Bell River Elementary. Kika is purchasing the materials for her 5th grade art classes to create Smile Pendants. These pendants will be available in the office, the principal's office, and the nurse's station for students who need a lift during their day. Congratulations, Kika. Patty Lowhorn from Palms Elementary. Patty's purchasing a Chromebook for use in her classroom. She would like her students to become comfortable with Google Classroom. They will also have access to other educational websites and search engines, such as MobiMax, Think Central, Quizlet, Kidrex, and Weebly. Paul Dimmer from Marine City High School. Paul's awarded a grant to allow him to purchase, build events for his Science Olympia team. This year's events include helicopters, hovercraft, Mission Impossible, mousetrap vehicle, towers, and thermodynamics. Congratulations, Paul. Cynthia Jarzma from Riverview East High School. Cynthia is purchasing an assortment of novels and informational texts for her classroom library. The students will be, the student will be helping to choose books that they are interested in reading. Kathy Vandermeulen from Pine River Elementary. Kathy's purchasing a Chromebook for her classroom as well. This Chromebook will help increase and improve the use of technology in the classroom. Congratulations, Kathy. So, on behalf of the East China Educational Foundation, we'd like to say congratulations to all the Fall Grant recipients.
This is Rachel Card, Principal. The power of the PTO.
Good evening, Mrs. Seibula, President B. We're members of the Board of Education. It is my honor and privilege to share with you, highlight our parent-teacher organization. We refer to this segment as the Academic Spotlight, and the PTO is a key force in supporting the great teaching and learning in our school. Can you come up a little closer? You'll be on quick. Our PTOs across our district work tirelessly throughout the school year and during the summer to foster communications between the students and staff and parents. They also enhance our educational environment through technology and field trips and programs. They recruit volunteers and help us put on some of the wonderful programs during school and after school. But most of all, they're the key to creating a sense of community, spirit, and family in our school. And I want to introduce our Pine River PTO Executive Board, President Jessica Becker, Vice President Kelly Michaels, Treasurer Rebecca Stein, and Secretary Tiffany Bean, and they're going to share why the PTO is important to them.
Well, thank you for having us here today. It was quite an honor to be asked to actually come to a meeting and present what we do, because a lot of what we do is behind-the-scenes personally. You'll see it on the, after, you'll see the finished product, but what we, when we're actually doing it, a lot is done on personal time or time when the kids are sleeping and other times when you're wondering what you're doing awake at these crazy hours. But, we do it because we love it. And people, so many times when we recruit people, which is a major part of what we do, we plan for the future for our students, people say they don't have time for this. Well, no one just has time for it. I don't know how many extra hours you would need in a week or a day to actually just have time with it. But, our hearts are there. These are for our kids. This is why we do it. We do it to create a school family, and that's our goal as our PTO. And when I stepped on last year, that was what I wanted. I wanted our school to be our pioneer family. We never refer to it as just the kids or the students, or it's our family. And that is why we do most of the things for our families, because we love it. It's a part of us, it's a part of our community. So, I'm going to go into a little bit of a detail of what we do. I will promise not to walk through our daily. We'll be here for a couple weeks, but, well, I'll introduce myself. I'm Jessica Becker, and I have three children. I have Bo at the high school, Maya at the middle school, and Mackenzie at Pine River. And then Kelly.
I'm Kelly Michaels. I have two children. Polly is at the middle school, and Elizabeth is at Pine River Elementary.
I'm Rebecca Stein. I have two daughters, Tabitha at Pine and Violet at Pine.
My name's Tiffany Bean, and I have three boys at Pine and 4th, 2nd in kindergarten.
All right. So we have our PTO. I'm sure all of you are familiar with PTO and what we do and the results of it. One of our big things that we do is our fundraising, and this year, we went in a little bit of a different route. We went on a chocolate sales, and it turns out, everyone likes chocolate, and we did really well. We probably sold, we haven't put our final numbers together, but it was close to $10,000 in chocolate at a dollar a bar. So, that, and that's what we're bringing back. That's for us. So this is, that was an amazing, amazing fundraising. Easy. Everyone is saying how easy it was. We are moving into our carnival time. That's in a couple weeks, and that's another big fun fundraiser. Volunteering, that's always a big one. Basically, you sit back and you watch who you can ask to do what next, because they don't have too much on their plate yet. So, that's always a fun, fun adventure for the school year. Serving as a school ambassador, that's, we represent who our kids are, who our school is. We interact with other schools, and we take pride in saying we're pioneers. Some of the results are, all of our fundraising, we were able to purchase iPads for the school. We have after-school enrichment programs that we put on from February through April. We have family math and science events that we are able to support, and the Chromebooks that everyone, the Google Books and Chromebooks is what seems to be the rage right now. So, we've been able to support that with the fundraisers. Some of our curriculum enrichment, our Learning is Fun. We do a book swap where kids bring in their old books and swap them out for new books. That's always a fun one, because it costs no money. And the kids are able to swap out about five books each. And our March is Reading Month, we do all kinds of assemblies for that. One school, one book. That was our recent, we probably started that, how many years ago now? Three, four years ago? And that's a lot of fun. We take a book, and we make it our theme for the school year. This year was Lemonade Wars. That's, we're on our last chapter tonight. Last chapter. So we had to hurry up and get home and read that. I don't know. One of the fun things we ju, we, like we said, we wanted to make this a family PTO school. We bought licensing for it to do family movie nights. And Friday nights, a few times a year, we open up the gym, we pull the screen down, and we show a movie. We pop popcorn, and a couple times, we've done a little fundraiser for a specific class, and it's been very, very successful. We have our open house in the beginning of the school year before everyone comes back in that we put on, where we have, when I first saw this, I saw Amy Castile there. Her son wasn't even here this year for her open house, but she showed up and she made hot dogs. And that is, that to me, I'll tell you what, all the money that we've raised, that picture teared me up more than anything, because I thought, why would Amy do this for me? She must really like me, that she's coming and grilling these hot dogs for me, you know? No, you know why she does it? It's because she's got her son there, and that's her family. Like, I just, it overwhelms me with emotion to think about the relationships that we've built at this school, with the teachers, with the principal, with the families. Once they move on, just, I'm so passionate about it. I really, truly am. And just the relationship we've all built. I mean, we went from barely knowing each other to knowing each other's kids like they're our nieces and nephews, or own kids sometimes when we have to. Like I said, our carnival's coming up, but, our daddy-daughter dance, that's a fun one. Every year, we pick a theme, and we've got a pretty awesome decoration chair. She works for Viviano Floris. I'm not giving her name away, because I'm going to keep her for myself, but, so we get a lot of our props from then, and we just make it amazing for a pretty low budget. Mother-son bowling, that's another one that's run, there's Miss Tiffany with her boy. I've never gone to this. That's a good time, huh? Are you a good bowler? Good bowler? You do it for your sons, right? All right. School celebrations, our 5th grade celebration, and our staff appreciation lunches. I was throwing a water balloon at Gary Griffin in that picture. I wasn't like dancing or doing something weird. I'm pretty sure I hit him too, but. This year, our 5th graders, I'm sure they'll still do a celebration, but we have it in our budget. This year, we were able to pay for them to go to Camp Tamarack. I've never been, but I've heard amazing things of it, and that's just one of the flexibilities we get to do with our budget. This is a pretty awesome, I don't know how you do this.
It's a Wordle.
Yeah. And she's like, I made a Wordle. I'm like, what is Wordle? Or a Wordle. This is everything from the budget. Is that what you said? These are words that came from our budget, and this is everything our PTO pays for. And I think, wow, you know, it doesn't feel like that. It doesn't feel, like, that's a lot of work. That's a lot of stuff. We, we help make it happen. We get the tools to make it happen, but that's everybody. Everybody has put their fundraising money in, their time in, their, anything that you need for an event, this is what our school does. So it's pretty awesome. That's pretty much all I have on this one, I think. I don't want to overtalk, because I will, I'll keep going.
She did a great job sharing her passion, and I think she alluded to the relationships, and really, that's the key. Family involvement in education matters. The more involved parents are, the more likely their children will succeed. And research has shown that parent support is more important than school setting, or student IQ, or economic status. So, we know that excellent schools are the results of parents and educators partnering together, and they help to bridge that gap between parents who are new and maybe a little shy to, bringing them, connecting them with staff and engaging them. And ladies, on behalf of the staff and students at Pine River, I want to thank you for your time and talents that you dedicate daily for our pioneers. This is a little video just showcasing some of the things that you do every day to support teaching and learning in our kids.
Thank you, PTO, for buying books for our literature library.
Thank you, PTO, for buying our Chromebooks.
Thank you, PTO, for our soccer帽.
Thank you, PTO, for our kitchen set.
Thank you, PTO, for our bubble bow.
Thank you, PTO, for our buddy bash.
Thank you, PTO, for our trust.
PTO, thank you for the Twisted Bay.
Thank you, PTO, for our trip to Camp Tamarack.
Thank you, PTO, for our iPads.
Thank you, PTO, for our scholastic news.
Do you have any questions for myself or our board?
No, just thanks for everything that you do.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for all your time and talent, for sure. Next item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Motion is needed for approval of the minutes, September 25, 2017, regular meeting, approval of payment of bills, financial statement, schedule of investments.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Frank. Support. Supported by Mr. Mullane. Comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same sign. So carry. Person wishing to address the board? I don't have any little green cards, so I take it that there's none. Okay. Move on. Reports, 2016 Audit. Mr. Curtis McBride from McBride Manley and Company, PC. Thank you.
Everyone leaves when it's my turn to present. Good evening, School Board. Superintendent Seibula. My name is Curtis McBride, and I'm a CPA for McBride Manley and Company. We are the CPA firm that audits East China School District's financial statements, and I'm here this evening to present the results of our June 30, 2017 Audit. And with me this evening are Samantha Hudson and Gwen Brzezinski. They are two audit managers at our firm, and they are also involved in the, in the audit of the school district. The only, I did hand out a physical copy of my presentation, if you'd like to follow that way. Sometimes I know that's easier than looking up at the screen. The only thing I do ask of you is that you do not distribute the copy of my presentation to the general public, because it only contains summarized information from our full audit report, and it does not contain our audit opinion. So, thank you for that in advance. Now, there are three types of audit opinions you can receive from your auditor. There is what we call a clean or unmodified audit opinion, which means that we believe the financial statements are reliable, and they are in compliance with our professional standards. And then, there is what we call a modified audit opinion, which means that, for the most part, we think they are in compliance, but there may be a few exceptions to that. And then, the third primary opinion you can receive is what we call an adverse audit opinion, which means that we do not believe the financial statements are reliable or in accordance with our standards. So I am pleased to announce that for the audit year, June 30, 2017, the district did receive a clean or unmodified audit opinion from our firm. So that's the highest audit opinion you can receive from an auditor. Now, I just want to clarify, that just simply means we believe that your financial statements are in compliance with our standards, and we're not providing any type of opinion on the financial health of the district. Now, getting into some of the financial data, the first slide that we're going to look at, we're going to focus on the general fund first. Now, the general fund primarily derives its revenues from state aid, from property taxes, and from some federal and local grant money. So here, we're looking at the balance sheet for the general fund. So you can see, starting with the assets, the general fund had roughly $3.7 million of cash and investments at the end of the year. It had another $5.118 million of amounts due from other governmental units. Now, that's primarily state aid for the months of May and June 2017 that you did not receive until July and August of 2017. But, since it was for a period prior to June 30, it's counted as an asset at the end of the year. So the general fund finished the year with total assets of just over $9 million, and had total obligations against those assets of about $4,880,000, to finish the year with an ending fund balance of about $4,165,000. Now, I'm going to get into the fund balance level and my recommendations in some subsequent Now, this next slide is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the general fund, or the income statement, if you will. Now, you can see the general fund actually generated $14,572,000 in property taxes during 2017. And the good news is, that's actually an increase of about $800,000 from 2016. So that's the first time we've seen that in several years. You can see that you had state aid of about $22.8 million in the general fund, and you had federal grant money of about $1,522,000, to finish the year with total revenues of about $40,329,000. You can see the general fund spent about $40,304,000 to finish the year with an ending fund balance of about $4,165,000. The general fund had a slight increase to its fund balance during the year of about $24,000. $24,000 or $25,000. So when you consider a budget of roughly $40 to $41 million, $24,000 or $25,000 profit is about as break even as you can get. Now to put this into perspective, the state of Michigan recommends that at a minimum, your general fund balance level be at about 10% of the annual expenditures in the fund. And at the end of 2017, you were at about 10.22 or 10.23% of annual expenditures. So in my opinion, your general fund balance is pretty much right where it should be. I certainly would not consider it in excessive fund balance, but you have done a good job at maintaining it and keeping it right where it should be. Now in this next slide, we're looking at general fund revenues by source and here we're comparing 2016 to 2017. So you can see in 2016, the general fund generated property taxes of $13.796 million and that number has come up to $14.572 million for 2017. You can see that state aid remained pretty close. You were at about $23.2 million in 2016. It was about $22.8 million in 2017. You can see your federal grant monies went from about $1.497 million in 16 to about $1.522 million in 2017. So when you look at the two years, you can see the general fund had a slight increase to its revenues of just under 1% from 2016 to 2017. Now in this next slide, we're looking at the general fund expenditures by function, again comparing 2016 to 2017. Now, when you look at the major functions for the district, you can see that basic programs is the largest function. Now, basic programs would be the actual expenditures for the schools themselves. So this, this would be the high schools, the middle schools and the elementary schools and all the costs related to those, those actual schools. So it makes sense that basic programs would be the largest function. You can see that basic programs went from about 22, just over $22 million in 2016 to about $21.8 million in 2017. And really in both years, you can see that basic programs roughly makes up 54 to 55% of total expenditures. You can see another major function would be added needs. That's primarily the special education program. You can see that went from about $4,198,000 in 16 to about $4.243 million in 2017. And then you can see another major function would be operations and maintenance, which is self-explanatory. That's the major operations and maintenance for the school district. That went from about $3.4 million in 2016 to $3.485 million in 2017. So you can see total expenditures went from $40.243 million to about $40.3 million in 2017 or about a .15% increase. So it was roughly about the same in 2017 as it was in 2016. Now in this next slide, we're looking at general fund expenditures by type. Here, we're actually looking at three years. So we're looking at 15, 16 and 17. You can see salaries in 2015 for the district were at about 22, just over $22 million, came down to about $21.79 million in 15, or excuse me, 16, and then came down to $21.427 million for 2017. Now, one thing you might notice is that even though salaries have gone down since 2015, benefits have gone up. But that is not because the employees in the district are receiving more benefits now than they were in 2015. That's actually because the district was required to contribute more to the pension plan, the MEPs' pension, to help stabilize the, the underfunding in the plan. So you can see the benefits went from $12.527 million in 2015 up to $13.2 million in 2017. And in fact, the state of Michigan is actually helping you fund that. So the, the district actually received a little more than $3 million in state aid money during 2017 to help fund the pension. And in fact, you received about $200,000 more in state aid to help fund the pension than you did in 2016. So that really explains the increase in the, in the, the benefits expenditure from 2017 to 2016. You're receiving some additional funds from the state of Michigan and in turn, you're taking those funds and you're contributing it directly to your pension. Now this next slide is the seven-year historical revenue and expenditure trend for the, for the general fund. Here, we're actually going all the way back to 2011. So starting with the revenues in 2011, you can see the general fund actually generated about $44.4 million in revenues in 2011 and that number has come all the way down to about $40 million in 2017. So that, that's, that's just over a $4 million loss in revenues in the general fund from 2011 to 2017 or roughly 10%. So you guys are actually, you're actually trying to operate your general fund with $4 million less in funds than you were in 2011. So when you look at expenditures on the right, the peak year for expenditures was also 2011 where you spent almost $44 million and that number has come all the way down to about $40.3 million in 2017. So the district, you guys have done a really good job at, at preparing and budgeting for the, the loss in revenues and you've been able to maintain your fund balance as a result. So if you think about where your fund balance level is right now at $4.165 million, well, you lost roughly $4 million in revenues between 2011 and 2017. So if you, if you had not budgeted appropriately, you would have lost your fund balance. Now this next slide, we're actually looking at the general fund financial data compared to other data from school districts throughout the state of Michigan. And this information is actually obtained from an MDE bulletin, so it's from bulletin 1011. The one thing that I do want to clarify is that the information from the bulletin is one year behind, so this information is from 2015, 2016, but we're actually comparing it to the 2016, 2017 district information because that's the most current. So looking at the far right, the two right columns, that's actually information from other districts throughout the state. And then on the left, that's from the East China School District. So when I look at the comparisons, I don't really see anything that sticks out too much. And I think really the most useful information on this slide would be near the bottom where we're looking at unassigned fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. So as I mentioned in a previous slide, the East China School District is currently at about 10.2 or 10.23%. And then when you look just to the right of that percentage, that's the average for, for other school districts in the state of Michigan. So they're, they're at about 9%. So in my opinion, as I mentioned, I think your general fund balance is right where it should be at the 10.22%. And in fact, it's a little bit higher than the average school district in the state of Michigan. Now, the next fund I want to talk about briefly is the debt service fund. Now this fund is a little bit different than the general fund in that it derives its revenues almost entirely from property taxes. And those property taxes are used to pay for two outstanding bond issues that you have that total about $15,635,000, at least at the end of June 30, 2017. So you have one bond issue that was roughly $5,505,000 at the end of the year and that matures in 2021 and you're currently paying about 3% to 4% interest on that bond. So it's a pretty low interest, interest bond. And then the second bond is about $10,130,000 and that matures in 2022. And in fact, on that bond, you're only paying, you're paying anywhere from 2% to 3% interest over the, the life of that bond. And in fact, that bond was refinanced in 2015 by the district to lower the interest and get better terms. That actually saved the, the taxpayers in the district roughly $1.4 or $1.5 million in property taxes over the life of that, of that, of that bond. And he, we're looking at the balance sheet here, you can see it had about $629,000 of cash on hand and finished the year with an ending fund balance of about $629,000. Now there really isn't a recommended fund balance level for a debt service fund. The important thing is that it generates enough property taxes and it has enough resources on hand to make debt service payments and it currently does. Here, we're looking at the income statement for the debt service fund. You can see it generated about $5,172,000 in revenues. You made bond payments of, of just over $5 million and as I mentioned, you finished the year with an ending fund balance of about $629,000. Now the last fund I want to talk about is the sinking fund. Now the sinking fund is what we call a capital projects type fund. So the sinking fund is actually used for major capital improvements throughout the district. And the sinking fund can actually, the, the funds can only be used to acquire real estate and to make significant repairs or improvements to buildings throughout the district. And it can make some minor technology improvements that are limited to things like wiring and things of that nature. The one thing I should mention is that just like the debt service fund, the sinking fund, the, the funds in it are actually restricted and they cannot be used for general operations. So you can't take the debt service fund, fund balance and the sinking fund balance and transfer it over to the general fund. They, they have to remain in these two funds. So here, looking at the balance sheet, you can see the sinking fund had about $571,000 of total assets for the year. It had some other, it had some miscellaneous liabilities of about $44,000 to finish the year with an ending fund balance of about $527,000. Now the last slide I want to talk about is the income statement for the sinking fund. You can see it generated about $679,000 in total revenue for the year. You had major capital improvements, about $450,000 during the year. That was primarily for major building improvements. I think some roofs were replaced as part of that. And then, as I mentioned, you finished the year with an ending fund balance of about $527,000. And just like the debt service fund, there really is not a recommended fund balance level for the sinking fund. It's, the important thing is that it generates enough revenues through property taxes to, to pay for those significant improvements. Any questions?
On the page, general fund expenditures by type, salaries, benefits, other, you had mentioned that government, the state of Michigan was giving the contribution to that. Is that, was that something new or did that contribution go up from what we had been used to in the past?
It, it has. The, the state of Michigan has been assisting you with funding that and that's, that's been there over the last several years. And in fact, what they're, what they're giving you to help fund that has gone up a little bit. Like I said, it's gone up about $200,000 to help stabilize the, the MEPs' underfunded liability.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mullane?
And just to clarify on that point, that's, those are pass-through dollars. We don't have any control over how.
That's correct.
They come here, they go out.
Yeah. Yeah. Literally as soon as it comes in, you're responsible for, for turning right around and giving it right to the pension plan.
I have one question on, early on, you, you made a comment that it was good news because there was an increase in dollars coming in for property taxes.
Sure.
Just for clarifying purposes, because I think a lot of people, even though it's been 23 years, are still confused by Prop. A. Even though our property taxes are going up, that doesn't mean the school district's flush with money because it doesn't affect necessarily our per pupil allowance. That money is basically just kind of balances out against what the state's going to put in or give back to us.
That, that's exactly right. It's, in, in property taxes, you know, there, there, there's been a decline in property taxes throughout the state in most, you know, the most drastic years were 2009, 2010 and 2011 due to the poor economy, where property values fell drastically in, in those three years. And you did mention proposal A. So there were a couple of things that happened to our, to, to our state law. One of them was proposal A and the other one was the Headley Amendment. And what happened is those two, those two provisions really limit the amount of property taxes you can, you know, you can charge a resident. So basically, it's limited to the lesser of inflation or 5% in the case of proposal A. And then the Headley Amendment actually comes in and limits it, limits the entire district as a whole. So they kind of get you in two spots there. So what happened is when you have one or two years where you have a decline in property values of 20 to 30%, which is what we had, well, because of those limitations where they can only increase by inflation from an economic value, even though the property values have gone up, like we're experiencing that right now. You know, you know, maybe the property value has gone up 30% from two years ago, but the property taxes are still capped to that 5% or inflation. So a lot of communities and school districts have, have been having to deal with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? We thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. McBride?
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And ladies?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Good one.
Item eight, information discussion items, summer tax collection.
The summer tax collection, this is an annual, annual resolution to impose a summer tax levy to collect the school property taxes, just as Curtis was just explaining to us. I'll be asked, it'll be an action item at the November meeting, just an introduction at this meeting.
Next item, mission, vision, goal-setting, MASB-supported process.
Cindy Ganson from MASB is here this evening to update us on the strategic planning process.
Yes, Superintendent Seibula, President, excuse me, President Byard, members of the board, it's nice to see everyone again. My portion of your journey is ending, but you are just beginning the journey that you're going to be taking on for the next three to five years. Having gone through the extensive retreat that we did back in April and then your most recent goal-setting or implementation plan. So I'm here tonight to give you that final report of your strategic plan as we completed that, for the most part, at the implementation or goal-setting the other day. And now it will be up to your administration and yourselves to take that to the goals that you have determined. So, having said that, I will take us through this. Just a timeline for the strategic planning process. It seems like that it wasn't that long ago, but actually the pitch to do this for you was back in December of last year. You approved it in January. We did data collection in February and March. We actually had your retreat on April the 29th. Last week, we did your implementation workshop. And again, I'm here this evening to present the final report to you. So over 11 months that we did this, you had a lot of things going on, but that's okay. We made it here. Stakeholder input. The purpose for that was to provide an opportunity for input from all your stakeholders, your community, your staff, yourselves, everyone that you wanted to have a stake in this process. Gauge their values and perceptions of the community, gather data to use as a decision-making tool. We identified and assessed the strengths, the areas for improvement, barriers for implementation. We identified a vision and we identified some priorities. You had an outstanding response rate on your surveys, 924 responses. That doesn't happen very often. So you have a community that is very engaged and interested in what goes on in your school district and you should be very proud of that. At our retreat back in April, again, we, I brought you lots of data from all that information gathering and from other resources that we have about your district and the other districts that you chose to compare yourself with. So we had an overview of the, what the process would look like, the timelines. We did an environmental scan, what's on the horizon, what's going to go away, what we can look forward to. You know, really get your mind thinking innovatively. Report of your current and planned initiatives, current vision, mission and belief statements. Review and analysis of all that stakeholder data, demographic, district data. We developed, we spent a lot of time developing your vision, mission and your belief statements and those strategic goal areas. And then I'll give you an overview of the next steps. We spent an entire day and it was a very productive day. Here's a list of your participants at the retreat and many of those folks also put themselves on a list to help you going forward. And you had 17 individuals that participated in the goal-setting or implementation exercise last week, some of the same people. So, at the end of the retreat, this was the mission statement, changed not dramatically, but slightly from your previous mission. "East China School District works in collaboration with parents, students and the community to prepare our children to be successful throughout life." And I wanted to mention, if you have any questions as we go through, please feel free to stop me. Your vision, "The East China School District will create a culture of opportunity by promoting student ownership or accountability, self-awareness and unity, providing a student-centered environment, offering a rich and varied curriculum, supporting your students socially, emotionally, academically, by ensuring that individual needs of every student are met." You're very student-oriented, as you should be. Your belief statements, and if I remember correctly, the beginning letter of each of these statements spells out or stands for East China School District. "Every decision is students-first, creating a passion for lifelong learning, sustaining an environment of social and physical support, safety and innovations, data-driven practices and decision-making, and people equals all your district stakeholders." data-driven practices and decision-making; and people equals all your district stakeholders." So these are just a generalized goal statements. And then the next slides after this will be more specific and pinpoint the work that your implementation team did. So, "Implement a systematic marketing plan promoting positive, clear, concise information about your district to the surrounding communities. Implement a comprehensive, multi-tiered system of support. Implement a professional learning community by building and district. And create a comprehensive building plan." So our agenda for the implementation was, again, to review the process. And then we spent quite a bit of time on reviewing the, all the information that you had previously as an outcome of the retreat. But then, how did we determine how we would drill down to each one of those goals? What would that look like? How would that play out? So that's what we spent quite a bit of time on. And then, we spent time on a quarterly timeline. And I noticed when I came in that we left up one of our worksheets back here. Superintendent Seibula, if you want to just talk about that for a minute?
Each of the goals had a worksheet like that that we worked on that outlined who was going to be responsible, the timeframe in which we were going to do it, and what we needed to move forward with the goals. And by doing those worksheets, it flushed out a lot of the action steps that we were going to have to take in order to reach our goals.
Yeah, very deliberate and intentional, who, what, where. And again, each of those is 90 days. So think about each one of those goals having quarterly goals. But then, you know, each 90 days, we're really tracking the steps that we're going to take to implement those things. So here are your goal statements with some first-year objectives. Under academics and programs, implement your district-wide, multi-tiered system of support. So your first-year objectives, obviously, are going to survey your staff about what your current intervention processes and practices are for students. You're going to spend lots of time on professional development for administrators, so everyone understands what that means. And as you continue to assess students and what their needs and resources are, and your staff does that, you'll be able to pinpoint the things that are needed. Under communication, community engagement, your goal, implement a systematic marketing plan to promote positive, clear, concise information to the community and surrounding districts. One of the things that we talked about was, you do great things in your district, but sometimes, they don't get out of the walls of your district. And we don't celebrate enough. We don't talk about our successes. And so those are kinds of things that, you know, entice people to want to come to your district. So it's important that you do that. So you're going to talk about using a targeted form of communication based on whatever your parents' needs are. Send out a quarterly newsletter. Roll out a new user-friendly website with continual upgrading and functionality. Goal three, under personnel leadership. You will implement professional learning communities by building and district. First-year objectives, professional development planned prior to the school year with common expectations linked to your school improvement plan. Again, tying those things together. And then, what is the structure for professional learning communities? What is the calendar? So including your district and building goals. So implementing that, helping people to understand how that's going to benefit them in each building, how they'll have more resources with other staff members. So really, creating more of that community across your entire district for the benefit of your students. And goal area four, under operations. Within two years, create a comprehensive building plan with community input. So I anticipate you'll be doing a lot more focus groups. You'll be reaching out to your community to get their opinion as you move forward. You talked very strongly in the retreat about a consolidation plan, exploring a variety of options. Because there are a lot of different ways that you might go about that, bringing a more cohesive community, school community. And what is going to benefit your students most? So I think you'll be spending a lot of time talking about that. But that's really good, because the more input you get from your stakeholders, the better idea you have of what that community should look like. Realigning curriculum across all levels and buildings. Creating enrollment projection reports and creating a long-term program and class offerings plan. So, not tonight, but at your next meeting, after you've had some time to review these items. And you'll also get an Excel spreadsheet of those goals and the quarterly objectives. And we started your quarters in January, because that just seemed like, once we talk about this and you approve it, that starting the work at those goals would be January. Had we finished this in, you know, August, then we would have said fall. Starting in September, you might implement that. But this kind of starts right at the calendar year. So you'll be asking for board approval of the mission statement, the vision, the belief, and the goal statements that we spent time at, at the retreat as your plan for the next three to five years, moving your district forward. So just some recommendations from MASB to ensure success. Obviously, aligning this with your district school improvement plan. Obviously, aligning your strategic plan with your budget and beyond. And you had a very nice fund balance to help you take that forward. Congratulations on that. Develop and implement a reporting or a board monitoring calendar. I'm not sure which superintendent evaluation tool you're using, but reporting out on all these items as part of that superintendent evaluation in alignment with what's going on with your other building administrators is really a nice way to wrap that together. Developing and implementing internal, external communications. You have already talked about that in one of your goals with a newsletter and lots of things like that. Develop and implement action plans for each objective. That 90-day plan we talked about back here will accomplish that for you. Again, I think there'll be plenty of opportunity for stakeholder involvement. And we recommend that you schedule a one-year renewal with your original planned team participants, just to make sure that everybody still understands, you're still on target, and you're still moving in the direction that you chose to. And these are my final thoughts. I really enjoyed working with your district, the board, the administration, and staff. And I truly can tell you, you have a community that cares about your schools and your students very much. The involvement was superb, if I must say. Any questions?
We thank you very much, Cindy, for being here and the time you've spent in our district and the leadership that you gave us in bringing all the thoughts of MASB and helping us to get a clear picture of moving forward.
Good, good. Well, I'm always available if you ever have questions or need some assistance doing something. So any questions on any of the work that we presented to you this evening? If in the time before you actually approve, you have a question, feel free to contact me. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. And thank you for allowing MASB to work with you on this project.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Cindy.
Item C, under information discussion items, option agreement to purchase ECEC. I'll introduce Mrs. Seibula, who then will make a statement.
Yes.
Introduce our guest.
Thank you. Included in your board packet is an option for purchase agreement for the ECEC building in St. Clair. The agreement is signed by Kathleen Burton, the president of Michigan Stage Festival. If you remember, the Michigan Stage Festival was the top new project as identified by the Blue Meets Green Strategic Plan in April of this year. Michigan Stage Festival is a proposed multi-month regional performing arts festival similar to Ontario Stratford Festival. The ECEC building is ideally suited to serve as a centrally-located performing arts center. It is proposed to house festival headquarters, dormitories for seasonal performers and crews, and provide badly-needed space for rehearsal, set, and costume building, as well as a 500-seat professional venue. The ECEC building is a beautiful old building that the East China School District would like to see preserved, taken care of, and continue to serve the St. Clair and East China communities. I believe that the Michigan Stage Festival group has the knowledge and ability to make this vision a reality. During the action items this evening, I'm requesting that the board approve for me to sign the option purchase agreement with the Michigan Stage Festival. And Mrs. Kathleen Burton is here this evening if anyone on the board has questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number nine, action items. Recommended action, the Board of Education accepts the audit report for fiscal year 2016-17 as prepared and presented by McBride, Manley, and Company, PC. Motion needed?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Distorat?
Support.
Mrs. Murphy. All those comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried. Item B, the Board of Education approves the option agreement for purchase of the building and property referred to as the East China Education Center, 301 North Sixth Street, St. Clair, Michigan.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported multi-times. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. So moved. Item 10 is items for next board meeting, which is just our summer tax resolution. And with that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.